Are you okay with the agenda as it's presented? Natalie.
It's it like only intermittently lets me unmute myself. I'll try to stay unmuted. Um, it's like you cannot unmute. Uh, yes, I have no concerns about the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, see that that's the agenda. Nobody had any changes, uh, motion to approve?
Yes, I I motion to approve.
That's okay, I'll second.
Right, you guys are gonna be busy. Um, let's see. Any conflicts of interest? Okay. We doing him or are we doing Will under the announcements?
You wanna do that?
Sure. Yeah, go for it.
All right, uh, is it okay if I say here or shit? Um, I just wanted to to um, come this evening. My name is Will Van Vechter and I'm the the county manager. Forkford County, uh, and I wanted to come introduce myself. Uh, I haven't had opportunity to do that. Uh, I also wanted to uh, speak quickly to um, a change in directorship. Uh, so as I, you probably are all aware at this point, uh, Sarah resigned a couple of weeks ago. Um, I wish her the best in retirement. Uh, it sounds like she's having a good time. Um, and I would also want to thank her for all her service here in her county. Um, she was uh, a lot of fun to work with, so she will be missed. Um, but we're also really excited about the future. Um, I think uh, a great team here. I've gotten to spend a little bit more time with the staff here at the library. Uh, the last few weeks and I feel like they're in a really good spot to to keep the library moving forward, so. Uh, excited about the future of the library as well. And I also wanted to uh, and I haven't been here before, so I, if you guys have any questions about what's going on with county, I also wanted to kind of. Give you guys an opportunity to ask me.
The biggest thing from my perspective is um, I haven't seen any seen any announcements. At all, you know, in any of the local papers or anything like that. Um, and I just was wondering if that was gonna happen. I mean. I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how the county does, yeah.
That isn't something we necessarily do. Um, there's been obviously that internal communication, so other departments know.
Yeah, internally then, but externally doesn't. Have you guys been getting any questions or anybody? You know, commenting? Anybody know?
Um, we've had a couple people ask, um, well, you know, she's retired and everybody's good.
Yeah, it's not, you know, um, it's not anything we're we're trying to hide. That's not why we.
Right, right, right.
It's just kind of out of respect for for.
Yeah.
Sarah County is trying to keep things moving forward in a positive direction. And I expect we'll have some announcements here in the future about ten next steps.
Yeah.
And so that that's kind of how people.
Yeah, and then just for the record too, I agree with Will that she did a great job. She was very.
Absolutely.
Very forward thinking. She was very active in everything. She she has left big shoes to fill. Um, but I know it's in capable hands. I've been out a couple of times too. I check on them to make sure they're doing okay. That nobody strangled each other.
We did something.
Um, but yeah, it seems like everything's going okay. My only, the only thing I would say to you, Will, is is that when Seth was here, the first time I checked on him. He made the comment that they were, he that he didn't think that the county was gonna be in a big hurry to build a position. And from my perspective, I don't, I I certainly don't want it to be rushed. But I don't want to do that to them. I want, you know, I want a decision to be made and I'd like it to be, you know. In a timely manner. I know how cities and counties work and it'll be, you know, forever, but gonna happen before they find somebody, but.
Well, I I I will say I I just this afternoon had another conversation with the county's HR director and we're putting a plan.
Okay. Yeah, if you could, if you could, if you could keep us. Not all, but just um, updated so we know what's going on.
Yeah.
You know, that that would be helpful.
Absolutely, and I I wanna invite uh, the board members to reach out to me individually, um, and and. You know, kind of give me uh, any sort of input you have on on, you know, what tracks you might just to go, you know, obviously. We're gonna, there's certain guardrails on all the decisions we make, but we'd like I'd love to hear from you guys, uh, you know.
Yeah.
In terms of, um, where we are and.
But I think the biggest thing, Sarah mentioned it often, is that everybody that works here is very community involved. And that would be probably the highest priority is to have somebody that is, you know, feels the same way. Um, that the patrons are um, first, you know, um, so that it's it's. And they have to be a good leader too, you know, so, and then we put you on the spot.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Going forward, are we still gonna have the rural outreach? The the bus, the, you know, Sarah had some great ideas. So what about the rural community?
I think, um, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a library expert, so um, I I I can't speak to kind of any sort of library policy. Direction or anything like that, but I I think we wanna make sure we are reaching the rural parts of the county. I I'm just speaking. My own personal opinion, I think it's important, this is the county library. Um, and I also think it's really important to figure out the most effective ways, efficient ways. How can we, how can we engage those folks outside the city um, to come and participate within in the great services that the library provides, so. Um, so again, you got, you got a great staff here at the library with um, lots of ideas and any day people, you know, continue to push that outreach. Um, and and find the right avenues to connect with the folks on the rural part of the county.
Tell me if I'm wrong, Ken, the issue right now would be staffing.
Mm-hmm.
Because you already were short, now you have one less.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I think that would probably be the biggest.
Yeah.
Prowders.
Yeah, we do have, um, Brenda, she does our outreach. So, um, she is, she's got a full schedule coming up.
Okay.
Um, and maybe not necessarily the bookmobile right now, because we have the van. Um, there's still some training left to do with the bookmobile and um, for her to be able to drive it, things like that. Um, but for now, she has the van. And so um, she is meeting with everyone and setting up um, programs. So she has a very busy schedule.
Good.
Yeah.
You're good, so am I putting you on the spot? So are you gonna have any interest in applying for the job or not?
Yes.
Oh, I should say, I read through my mind too. Thanks for asking that.
I just wanna clear her down.
Really put me on the spot.
I have questions about like staff changes and trends.
Oh, you're cutting out.
I guess I continue to wonder what our role on the board is since we, oh, bummer. Um, a- any better now?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
A little bit, okay. Well, um, you know, obviously, um, this change was really sudden. The change that happened with Cindy York was really sudden. There are obviously things happening behind the scenes that our board maybe or maybe should not be involved in, but it seems like if we're to help support our staff and move forward. I guess I would at least like to know, like, what were the barriers Sarah was facing, the challenges that we were clearly unaware of? How can we better support staff? Like, what do we not know and why aren't we more involved?
See, that question was directed at me.
Was that question for Will or me, Natalie?
Um, maybe Will.
I know she, it's hard to hear. Um, she was asking what barriers Sarah was facing, um, the challenges we're having. And um, what can the board do to help us and why wasn't the board aware? Basically.
My understanding as far as why we weren't aware, we went to a meeting with the county. And the county, then they they approved the uh, hour changes and all of that stuff. Everything was fine and at five o'clock that night, she turned in her resignation notice. So that's as much as we knew. You know, I didn't hear about it until two days later, but you know, I mean, that was as much as we knew.
Yeah, we um, we didn't know either.
Yeah.
We were not aware. Um, so we were unprepared. Um, you know. You can't plan for something that you're not prepared for, so we um, yeah, we're just trying to band together and keep things going, keep our services going and um, move forward.
And and I just wanna reiterate it, you know, I've been, I've been really impressed with how the staff here stepped up over the last couple of weeks. We've done a, done a great job. There's certain things you can't, you can't plan for. Um, certainly there are some challenges that we're facing kind of across the whole county organization. Um, and I'd be happy, you know, um, so if 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 you wanted to kind of take a deeper dive in into some of those kind of one-on-one. Feel free to reach out, oh, oh, we don't have cards.
Yeah.
It is, um. But I I don't think, you know, certainly, you know, I I don't wanna go into too much detail right now, but um, certainly there are some, some general. General challenges out there and there's some that are specific to the library. Um, and uh, you know, I think in the day, a lot of it comes down to money. And how how we streaming resources and and putting our resources, and just speaking generally about the library, nothing specific. Sarah, uh, but there there are those, those challenges and and I'd love to find a kind of a space, um, a way for me. To engage more with the board here, um, because you guys know a lot more about the library than I have, although I'm running around in twenty different departments on any given. Trying to learn as much as I can, but I think you guys do have a lot of valuable input and that's why I'd love to hear from you guys, um, more. You know, maybe a more conversation about what what you'd like to see out of the next director and all of that.
I mean, to ask this question more specifically, is there a project that Sarah was championing? That we might also be like, yes, let's move forward, that the county wants us to stay away from? Like, are there lessons that we need to learn from what's recently happened?
Uh, I I do think there's a, again, this is where I I think we, this is, this is a problem here, I'm not playing the board at all for any of this. Um, I think there's an opportunity for us to improve communication. Um, I think um, there's certainly um. There's certainly, certainly room out there for um, giving a feedback to the money thing for us to kind of. Go down an avenue where the board gets caught off guard that we're spending staff resources or financial resources, um, when we know, you know. You know, you mentioned staffing earlier, staffing levels. Uh, like, we we've, we've gotta kind of come to a a common understanding in terms of. What are we putting our resources towards? Um, you know, I I, Sarah mentioned it in her resignation letters, I don't think it's a surprise. But the Jennifer Canyon project was one where, great idea, but that takes a lot of work and a lot of time. And it it's a broad, broad community effort that needs to be driving that conversation. The fight, you know, the, the vision as I understood it would necessarily tell a lot of stakeholders, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of planning and and thought that needs to go into how you accomplish that. And um, some of that, that work that, that project hadn't been fully kind of explained or discussed um, with with the board. Um, so I, you know, there's, there's certainly opportunity. I I don't wanna harp on the Jennifer Canyon project, so I think it's a new concept. But just making sure we're, we're all kind of communicating on the same page and and. Kind of going in the same direction, um, so we can accomplish.
Yeah, I don't know about you guys, but from my perspective, that was a big bite, okay? That was, there were a lot of moving pieces with that and everything. And with everything else that Sarah was doing and responsible for, I, she could have, she could have used a lot more help. Um, you know, county-wise, and I don't, you know, that could have been a communication thing, but she could have, uh. Again, my perspective, she could have uh, enlisted or at least gotten some help with the, from the county. Or more help from the county in order to do that. Great idea. We all thought that was a great idea. Um, the outreach to Jennifer Canyon is is probably one of the more important, as that continues to grow. And um, but you you know, you can only do so much, and then all the different things she was running into. You know, with um, not problems, but just the challenges that she was running into with that. And that that really, in all honesty, you almost needed to have a full-time person on that project, you know, and I'm not.
Okay.
Anybody.
Who is the right person to continue to move that or other similar projects forward? I mean, that one, for example. Um, was an opportunity that I know our hospital system was hoping to piggyback off on, uh, off of in the next few years. To bring healthcare up to Jennifer Canyon. Like, who's the right person at the county level to champion this sort of project, if not the library?
But from from my perspective and and just being involved in big kind of planning projects like that. Um, there's really gotta be community conversation about who is gonna lead that. Is it right for the county to lead that? Is it another um, stakeholder here in Cook County who needs to help lead that? Cause they're, uh, you know, Michael mentioned it, there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of, there are a lot of great ideas wrapped into having a branch. For the library of Jennifer Canyon, including, as as you mentioned, Natalie, you know, some, some healthcare services. I think that, like, we've gotta have a community conversation. Um, I think, um, you know, if if I were, if we had money and in the resources and there was community buy-in. I think bringing in a group like CYC, who has experience with kind of leading some of these, these efforts as, as more of a consultant to help bring everybody together. And 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 tackle that would be the, kind of the best way to go about it. Um, it's a lot to ask the library to lead that.
Was the county part, I mean, like, we did a lot of community meetings and strategic planning for the library. We did bring interest groups in from all over the county, and there were so many meetings with a consultant. And a lot of that planning came out of that. It it's now just feeling like it was a really discoordinated effort.
I I think if we had more staff.
Yeah.
To to support this huge project, um, it would have been less of a strain on on us as staff. Trying to run the day-to-day library stuff. Um, I mean, it was, it is a great idea. But we just didn't have the manpower, like, we needed more of a focus on, you know, the library itself, the mothership. Um.
Yeah, and I guess I always felt that way every time Sarah would focus meetings on the outreach and like, this, this grant and all this project. I felt like, are we missing day-to-day? But nobody said that we were.
Yeah, that, I mean, she, there were so many projects in the works. Um, it was hard to keep up, honestly. Um.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there was a lot of stuff behind the scenes. We, staff was scrambling and um, yeah, it's been hard.
I know, I'm just kind of getting back to some of the staffing pieces. When Cindy left, that was really kind of swept under the rug. We did not get a lot of information and. Part of my brain says, go in and ask staff and have one-on-one conversations like you've invited us to do, but that doesn't help us as a board collectively. Like, understand what's going on, understand the role or the responsibility that we play in in different pieces and. I don't know what should happen in a public meeting versus what should happen in an executive meeting and if it's time to schedule an executive meeting. Cause I'd like to know more about what has been going on. I'd like to know more about about moving forward and what does that look like for us? Being part of any kind of hiring process. Each time these things have happened at the library, whether it's bringing on new board members. Or bringing on a librarian. It it seems like the commissioners have changed the process up. Um, so there's kind of a history of mixed ways of doing things, and I don't know like what's on the books or what. Um, really what the expectations are, so.
I I agree, that's such an excellent question, and I also wanna move forward. I mean, it seems like having one-on-one conversations to talk about the circumstances in which someone lost their job. That feels really toxic, like, that doesn't feel healthy.
I'm not, we, I can't, I can't talk about why somebody may have been let go from the county. Um, or even, um, you know, speculate on why somebody designed beyond, you know, what was in their resignation letter. And that's not the one-on-one I'm offering to have. And what I'm offering is I wanna hear from you. Kind of what direction you want the county to go in terms of uh, the next director. Um, but I also would love to have a conversation about, and and, you know, I I just showed up here, this is just public comments. So I don't have anything, anything prepared, but I'd also love to hear how, how like county administration and commissioners can work more hand-in-hand with the library board. So, um, I just, I wanna have that conversation. We can do it in a public meeting. Um, but I also, you know, we can't make decisions individually, obviously. Um, but I, sometimes it's, it's nice to have a one-on-one outside, um, a public meeting for somebody like me who's trying to get up to speed, trying to learn. I'm trying to get to know the board members on on an individual level, like, what what are you looking for? Like, it all helps me have, only like, um. You know, any sort of recommendation I I may ultimately make uh, to the, to the board commissioners or, you know. If I come here to support Ken and the library, like, having that background would be helpful to me, so, yeah, definitely.
Right.
Definitely not, but we talked about uh, individual circumstances, because we can't, some of that stuff, unfortunately. Um, you know, especially when it's, um, there's a, there's a separation and there's not a lot we can't.
Yeah, and I don't mean personal details. I mean, like, what's working, what's not working, and then what does that look like?
Yeah, I think that's a great conversation to have and what we should have.
Ken, that's good. Uh, one, one question, Will, I can, I, this board is different than the boards that I've worked with. I I was in credit unions and the boards did the hiring, the firing and all of that, as far as the CEO. Um, my question to you is just that, would it be, would there be an opportunity for a representative from the board? To observe the interviewing process? And the only reason I say that is is not to have a, not to have a say in it, but just to observe it, to see what, you know, what the candidates look like. The questions that are being asked, because really, to be in all honesty, the board doesn't have. Power may not be the right word, but a lot of power in this. You know, we're just an advisory board, if you will, you know?
No, I think that's a great idea. We can absolutely include a, a, a board member on the interview panel. Um, that is something that. We are, we are beholden to just county staff.
Yeah.
Being involved, uh, you know, so that, I'd love for somebody to look at.
And then as far as the board members go, that would be something I think we could discuss and make a determination of, and then, you know, one of us to do it. I I, if you get more than one, you start getting into convoluted, but if the one person that goes responsible for reporting back to the board as far as what happened and everything. I I just, I think that would be helpful, uh, because at least we get to see the process.
Sure.
You know, so. And next meeting, we'll bring, um, I think our executive meetings, I'll find out, because I know how they were handled in my world.
I mean, if we have an executive meeting.
Yeah, yeah, basically, an executive meeting in the credit meeting world, as you call a timeout.
Yeah.
Okay, and everybody that is not, oh, I was gonna say bad thing. Um. Um, it typically would be the CEO and the board members. That's it. If there were anybody else there, staff, you know, other executives, they would be asked to leave the room.
Right.
Um, if it was about the board member, they would be asked to leave the room. And then we would have a meeting, there'd be minutes. We would have a meeting and uh, then we would go back into the regular board meeting. So that's how it worked, but I'll try and look it up and see what I can find out, see if, like, Robert's rules of order. And see if there's a thing in there that tells what the, what the steps are for us as far as uh.
Yeah, I don't need steps. I just, I don't know what kinds of conversations are supposed to be reserved. There's a training or planning.
There, there are very, very few exceptions that allow you to go into an executive session for a public body. Um, that, talk to your lawyer about threatened or pending negotiations is one of them. Labor negotiations is another. There, there's five or six exceptions that allow you to go into executive session. Um, so anyways, we could, we, the county is also happy to provide, uh, we put some material together regarding public meetings and we can provide.
Okay. Yeah, good, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any more? Right. Anything on public comments?
Just gonna say, where are we on this? I'm not late.
Oh, there it is, there.
There's nothing there.
There's nothing there, nothing on public comments, okay. Uh, the consent agenda, which includes the minutes for the last meeting. Are there any changes to the um, minutes to the last meeting for for the consent agenda? If not, then I need a motion to accept them as presented?
I think that we accept the agenda as presented. I'll second.
Including the minutes.
Including the minutes.
Yeah, okay. All in favor? I, okay, any opposed? Oh, okay, now it's your turn.
Now it's my turn.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got the friends report. From their last meeting. Um. As I did not attend this one, um, that was Sarah, but you can read through the minutes there. Um. Does anybody have any questions on that?
They're gonna continue to have the bookshelves and everything?
Yep, mm-hmm, yep.
No changes apart?
No changes that way.
We did have one question. How are the hours going?
Yeah, I think they're going good so far. We've not had, um, we did have one, it wasn't a negative comment. But they said that they would usually come in between that six and seven o'clock hour, um, to get their book, but it wasn't the end of the world. So.
See, that, that was my whole thought, thought on that, that anyway, was just the fact that there is gonna be some adjustment.
Yeah.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but once they figure it out.
Yeah.
They get used to it.
We've had um, several people just this week come in between eight and nine. And um, so that's been good. Some people held a meeting in there, um, and, or they just come in and they sit, so that's been positive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any, any issues with any?
Nothing so far. Nope.
Yeah.
So we, we do wanna get um, a buzzer or something for the front door, cause when we're in the back in the staff area. We don't know who's in the building, who's come in, so um, we're gonna work on that to get a buzzer for that front door. Yeah, yeah.
We're still not really responding, you're just.
Right, it's just kind of to know, oh, there's the buzzer, so there's another person, or, you know, um. And then, of course, we can, we can look through the window. Um.
It seems like staff have to like really stay strong.
It's hard.
To not get interrupted in that hour.
Yeah, it's hard.
Cause once you start.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and so far, um, the gate, the gates haven't gone off, so that's a good thing. Cause we're not sure what are we gonna do when that happens. We're gonna obviously have to go out there, but.
Oh, like, he walks out with a book.
With a book, yeah, or it doesn't check out properly or something like that, so, but we're just taking it as a, taking it as it comes. And um, yeah, so far, it's, it's doing okay.
First, can you go with them? I'm gonna get, tell you what I have learned, and you can tell me if I'm completely off base. Somebody goes out the door with a book, and you can't accuse them. Okay, you can ask to help them. Can I help you check that book out or something? You can't accuse them, and I wouldn't, because you just get. Be careful.
Okay.
You know, um.
Yeah.
Be helpful, not.
We kind of just say, oops, it looks like that book didn't check out, didn't you? Come on up, we'll get you some help. No, we've never had to chase anybody. Well, yeah. Okay. Anybody have questions on the friends report? They did, um, they did donate. Or granted us, um, gave us a grant for the purchase of more um library bags. Or um, we were running low and so Stephanie looked online and found like a fabric bag that's a little bigger, a little deeper. Wider, that um, we could put the Friends logo and our logo on for cheaper. And so the Friends um. Said they'd pay for those, so they did. That was very nice of them, so that's probably about six months worth of bags.
When you get those?
We just got them. Yep, you'll have to come over so you can get one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the financials.
Mhm.
Is that what, where is that? Oh, okay, July.
Yeah.
So is that, so that would be the beginning of the fiscal period, right?
July one, yep, yep.
You haven't blown the budget yet, have you?
Not yet, not yet. Any questions on the financials?
Making more money now, yeah.
Know that we're making any money.
This isn't any financial statement I've ever said before. Okay, so we did the director of state, right? Now, policy.
Yes, poor Kayla. Um, yeah, so we've had um some problems with a few teens recently. Um, they like to steal stuff from the teen room. Such as Rubik's cubes.
Oh, okay.
Mhm, Rubik's cubes and some Legos. Um, and. Yeah, so we decided to make a new teen policy or update the policy. We've had one in place, but we wanted to kind of update it. So this is a draft that Kayla came up with. And um. It simplifies it a little bit. I don't have the older one on here, but um. It just kind of bullet points lays out specifically what we'd expect when the teens are in the teen room.
And when is this distributed?
Well, if you guys approve it, then we will put it up immediately.
Okay. So it's posted in the libraries?
Oh, yes, yeah.
You're posting it, you're not handing these kids a copy.
It'll be posted, yes, yeah.
Well, I think that should be virtual.
Well, you can tell it to them, but that doesn't mean they're gonna listen.
Yeah.
Yeah, but at least you got to fall back.
We do, yeah, and that's the whole point of it is to fall back on this and um. Just make it pretty cut and dried.
Somebody got any questions about the uh teen room policy? Anybody want to make a motion to approve the policy as presented?
I make a motion to approve the Cook County Library Teen Room Policy as presented. I was trying to get to the or else part and it's basically the last point.
Or else. We do, we are. I would say for the most part, pretty lenient. You know, we probably give them more warnings than we should, um, but we have had to um suspend some. Some teens for a few months, so.
Well, really all we can do is call the police. I mean, you can ask them to leave.
Yes.
Call the police.
Yep.
Okay, so I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor of approving the teen room policy. I, any opposed? Okay, we got that one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then this next one is the e-bike update. So I met with um the representatives from ODOT regarding the e-bike grant. Um. I hadn't, I I hadn't. Or I didn't, I wasn't aware of everything that the grant entailed and it's a lot. Um. With our staffing levels where they're at right now, I just, I wanted some input on what you guys thought about the e-bikes. Um, as of right now, I don't know that we have the staff to go forward with this, um.
Do we have bikes?
We have the bikes.
Natalie, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
She's not in there anymore.
What, maybe she's coming down, um. First off. I think. The time of the year plays in favor. Because I'm not sure exactly how many people are going to be using bikes in the winter time in the snow.
Well, and it's a safety issue, you know, it's a liability for us, um, and I did ask, Chris is our um. Representative that I was speaking to, he wants us to keep them going through the winter. He said if somebody wants to ride it in the snow, then they can.
Wait, this is ODOT? Cause this all went through an attorney too, right? I thought the county attorney had a look and we were like, good as far as liability.
He did, the waiver has not been finalized yet. The liability waiver has not been finalized yet. Um, legal is still looking over that.
So you can't do anything anyway right now, any?
Not right now.
Yeah.
But the first um reporting that we need to do quarterly reports is coming up at the end of September. Um, and so I've been kind of scrambling to figure out what, where Sarah's records were. What she had kept, what she, if she reported anything, and so I'm still looking through all of that, um. I just, there's just a lot here, um. I just don't know that we have the staff to keep, to do this right now, but.
Give them some of the details of the.
Yeah, so um. I should have marked where that was. So basically, we have to um track their usage, track how many miles they go, track um. The percentage of the CO2 that was reduced. And I'm sure there's a formula for that somewhere.
Do they have, they have a tracker on them, right?
Yes, there's a geo tracker on there. I don't know. Yeah, I don't know, um. Yeah, so and I mean, we've purchased the Lincoln locks, we've, we've done all of that, um. Gosh, where was that? We purchased the helmets and all of that. I've got the application up on the website.
Fill out, who does that go to, ODOT?
Uh huh.
One of the things that would suggest it to be used is that, and before the end of September, but ask them if they have a format.
They did, they said they would get me the form. So there would be a form. Right, right. Um, so if someone does check one of these out, it's going to take two staff members to go over there. Were required to give them a safety demo. And. Staff.
On the video.
Uh huh, to give them a demonstration.
This is crazy. I'm sorry, I've never been on board with this. And it just seems like it's, it would be taking away from what we're supposed to do in the library. Read. I mean, sorry. The the tracking, the CO2 standings?
Yeah, how many miles they go, where they go, how many times the same person checks it out? And then I'm supposed to send out a survey before they check the bike out and a survey after they check the bike out. It's a lot of manpower.
Yeah. And I think from my perspective, I I would, you know, as far as the policy and everything goes. Unless, the only thing I said earlier that I said was make sure you have something in the policy. That is a, um, it does have a thing, section twelve termination, so it does have an out policy, gotta have those. Gotta have those, um.
Well, and and this was an agreement between Sarah and ODOT.
Right.
Sarah as being the director of the library, and now that she is no longer here. I would think that that would give us an out. I just want, yeah.
I would never ask without Natalie being here.
Sure.
Cause she was the one that was pushing this. And I think it's a great community thing, I do. Um, I'm not sure, you know, with the staffing the way that it is, I agree with you, maybe this isn't the best time. That doesn't mean we, that we can't still file for the monthly reports. Basically says that we haven't initiated the pro- the uh project yet. And until we can address the staffing.
Sure.
And we can go from there. And I don't think maybe, because I haven't, you know, there hasn't been any, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any public. You know, information about this.
Very well.
I I do have it on our website.
Okay. So people are aware of.
Yes.
You know.
Car broke down and they wanted to know if they could get one of these e-bikes, that was my understanding.
That's what Sarah had said, right? At this point, they, we can't, because we don't know, we don't have all of these.
They gave us money and we bought the bike?
Yes. So, yeah, see, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure, because this was totally Sarah. Um, so we did get a check for twenty-three thousand dollars. And that was to purchase the bikes and the helmets, the Lincoln locks. And the geo tracking.
So the total is fifty-eight thousand.
That's the total of the grant.
With the agreement.
Yes.
But this feels way more legal than my knowledge.
Well, the thing is, I had a change before, can we push this off until?
Of course.
Next month?
Of course.
And then it gives us all time to read it, to go through it, and you can get questions and stuff like that?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll touch base with our legal department as well.
Say that again.
I'll touch base with our legal department as well.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I I agree with you though, the the, and I I don't like the word, but the longer we can stall the bet. Because like you said, there's a lot of, a lot of manpower that goes into this.
Yeah.
And you just don't have the horses at this point to pull it off.
No, and um.
Say it again.
May be terminated by mutual written consent of the party.
Yeah. Oh, yes, I'll send that to you, yeah, yeah, thank you for coming.
Take time, look through it, ask questions. Thank you. The one thing I would say, this used to drive me absolutely up a wall with my board.
And I just saw, I just now saw this as well. I had to have ODOT send this to me.
So the one thing that would drive me up a wall with my board members. They have questions, they wouldn't wait, they'd wait till the beginning. If you have questions, if there's something in this policy that you are concerned about. Let them know. So she can be prepared at the meeting to address the question. That.
Yes.
Bugged me, you know?
Yeah, yeah, please feel free to email me, call me.
Yeah.
With any questions. And like I said, I'm just trying to catch up with this as well, so, oh, you're locked in. Do what?
We closed.
Yes. So, um. Oh, I'm sorry, um, but yeah, so I'm, I'm just trying to catch up, I'm trying to find all of Sarah's notes.
I wonder if meeting with the good, um, with Natalie and her husband.
Mhm.
Would help give you a better sense of like who agreed to do what.
Yeah.
Does he know about tracking CO2?
I, I don't know, I don't know, but that's the other thing is we're supposed to get the bikes to him for monthly maintenance. There's just a lot of moving parts. I don't know. I don't know, um, I just don't know.
I think that would be the next best conversation.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yes.
What do we know? And then if it comes to terminating a contract, don't know if county legal.
Yeah, I'll, well, definitely. Definitely have to get with them, yes, yeah. I know there was a question with the insurance, um, and the county. Not holding the insurance, um. I don't even know how to explain it. There was something with the insurance, the liability insurance, the county didn't want. To hold that for good bike, they wanted good bike to hold the insurance. Put us on their insurance, does that make sense? And I. Yeah, and I don't know um what came of that either, um, so there's things I need to find out.
Yeah, that's awkward too, though, asking the local business, small business.
Yeah.
Not the responsibility from the government.
Mhm, yeah, and I don't know any of that legal stuff. But it's foreign to me, so.
Are there more contracts like this?
I don't know. Not yet. Yeah, when they sent me this, I was like, oh, okay.
So we passed the teen policy.
Yep.
Putting off on the, the e-bike policy for next month, okay.
Okay, so we have a second little free library that was um donated to us. We need a place to put that.
Yes.
Um, if anyone has suggestions.
My suggestion to Sarah had been, like, and especially if you're going up Juniper Canyon, was basically targeting the bus stops.
Okay.
So on the school district site, you can see all the places the bus stop, which is like at the front of PLA one.
So we did put one at PLA two.
Two, that, so that's by the mailbox.
Yeah, that's where, okay, so. Where does PLA one stop? The bus.
PLA one, um, it's right on Remington Road.
On Remington.
A row of mailboxes and because their neighborhood's not paved, that is the only bus stop.
Oh, just there, okay.
So it would be mailboxes and bus stop combined, but.
Okay.
Cause I know there, you know, there's been one at the fire station.
Yeah, and that's, it was too far up and and just not a good spot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we moved that one. Yeah, that is a good idea.
Where the kids are standing and or parents are waiting for the bus to come by.
Sure. Okay, yeah, that's a great idea, thank you. Um, our new hours began September second, and we talked about those a little bit, and for the most part, it seems to be going good. Um, and we'll get a buzzer for the door, not yet, because.
The old signs said.
It's, well, it said nine to six. Yes, but they don't have the self-service hours on there. We did keep those signs, didn't we, Amber? They're somewhere, yeah, um, but we're on a trial basis with our hours until November.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. I mean, it could get worse or.
With the county. Yeah, with the self-service. Yeah, with the self-service, yeah, that's kind of a trial because we haven't done anything like that before, so.
It was a suggestion by the county when we had that meeting. And they suggested having it for three months, I think it was.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll revisit in September, or I'm sorry, November, yes. Yeah, and then um the last thing, our non-resident fees are going to increase effective October first. The um yearly non-resident fee is going to be a hundred and fifty dollars from eighty-five dollars.
When you say non-resident, what does that mean?
They do not own property or physically live in Creek County. Yep.
Isn't that hoopla subscription like cheaper than that library? I don't understand why. Somebody doesn't wanna pay that.
No, hoopla, we've actually had a lot of Deschutes patrons call us because Deschutes dropped hoopla. And they are very angry about that.
You get like a buck a week, that's not worth a hundred and fifty bucks.
And they, they desperately want to come to us because we have hoopla.
It's, isn't it a limit of four now?
Four a month, yes.
I think they have a, a different limit, but.
Yeah, I think they might have had eight.
Yeah, but yeah, I think.
So.
Buy four movies, four CDs.
I know.
Books for less than a.
Our, our average circulation per checkout or per download with hoopla is two dollars and sixty-three cents. If you times that by four, times six hundred people, and it gets really expensive, so um.
Well, and I tell my kids, no, you download it on your library card, you have four.
See, exactly, yes.
You don't do that.
Yeah, but we did have to limit it to the four.
Series of four. I had deleted hoopla and then Libby had something that was a, I was sixty-two on the list, so I was like.
Here I go. Yeah.
So if you have a Deschutes County card. Can you use hoopla or do you have to pay the hundred and fifty bucks?
So you can't have a Deschutes and a Crook County together. You have to do one or the other.
Yeah, yeah, but if you have it in the shoots, and because they're not doing hoopla anymore.
You can't use it with your Deschutes card. You'd have to give up your Deschutes card and pay the non-resident fee for Creek County.
Yeah.
Yes. But they live in Deschutes County.
I'm trying to, okay.
Yeah.
They're coughing up a hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, so with the, with the shoots, if a non-resident. Yeah, Deschutes' non-resident cards are a hundred and ninety-five for their yearly non-resident.
We gotta fix it at big library.
Yeah, that's right. So. They're nice bags.
They're really cute bags.
I know, but you'll have to get one of our bags. I know, it's cute. Cute.
Okay, so that's the end of that. Anybody got any comments, discussions? It's six ten.
Anything more from us? Do you want us wandering around? Do you?
You absolutely can wander around.
Like, I don't know if understaffed means we need more hands on deck or like we can't even handle managing a pool of volunteers, but.
Yeah, so we do have quite a few volunteers right now, and they're on a regular schedule.
So books are getting shelved.
Oh, yeah.
Discs are getting cleaned.
Yeah, yeah, and we um, we're actually doing good holding the library down. Um, and Brenda is doing our outreach, so she's solely doing the outreach right now.
Seniors and kids?
Yep, yep, and she's um, she's doing a great job.
And did Steve's pillar really get their own library?
They did. Yep, they did. Um, a bunch of teachers came and asked us our thoughts on how they should set up their library. So that was cool, yeah, so they're pretty excited about having that. But we are still having the field trips for the kids to come to the library and have a story or um, get a tour. And Renee has three story times she's doing now a week and um, yeah, so we're still holding our programs. We just um, our staff that we have right now needs to focus here. So, we're doing good.
How many are other staff that are writing here?
Eight.
Do you still have twelve FTE?
No. What do we have, Amber? I don't have that in front of me.
There's eight, I have a work chart like in the binder I got. It would be, if you have eight staff, it'd be sad.
Seven FTE.
And I don't know if it's hard to tell you that we still have the possibility of. You know, the twelve that we used to have.
Yeah, that's the stuff that I think with their next steps, we need to ask about.
Yeah.
For sure.
And is anyone like part-time and through that hiring agency still?
Yes.
Seven county staff, eight county staff.
We have seven county staff and then one through mid-Oregon.
Part-time?
Part-time, yeah. Yeah.
So seven and a.
Yes.
So were you with the meeting with the county when they talked about the changing the hours and stuff?
Yeah, I was on Zoom, yeah.
Yeah, okay, they mentioned, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, that they. I thought it was interesting, but they mentioned the fact that out of the tax dollars. Were the libraries getting an additional three cents for, I don't know, a hundred thousand, whatever.
Yes, fifty-five cents.
Yeah, so they, they are getting an additional three cents, so, yeah, which, that. Yeah, no, it, it just, that was the one thing I was gonna mention, and that was just, I didn't wanna be jerk about it. But that's, you know, I've told you guys before, you know, with municipalities, the first cuts are always gonna be your rec department, your library. Always the way it is, even though we, you guys service a hundred thousand people. That just drives me crazy, so.
It's three cents per what? Um, the dollar amount?
Oh, for hoopla?
The extra.
Oh, fifty-five cents.
We get fifty-five cents.
Per.
I think it's thousand, isn't it?
I think it's a thousand.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Yeah, and it was fifty-three, but um.
Oh, I see where the three.
Yeah. Or fifty-two, it was fifty-two cents, because it went up the three cents, yes.
The last words I had with Sarah, these are the last words I had, I told her. We were discussing about the extra three cents. I says, oh, that means the board can get a raise.
Kim, why don't you just call Sarah, uh, Sarah and ask her where those notes are? That you need, that you're looking for, just call her up and ask her.
Yes.
Because that would be the easy thing.
Yeah.
Okay, now it's six fifteen.
Are you wanting to leave? I'm having such a good time.
Fifteen minute meeting, okay? Got a motion to adjourn?
Right, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Give a second. One favor, ah, okay. Now, you, no, now you can turn that off and now I can.